America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. School Committee Chair Report, that would be me. I want to use this time to make a statement, ladies and gentlemen, certainly for the viewing public, but also for the folks that are here tonight. And it's regarding question two, and that's the charter school vote. I know that it's very confusing what's been told. You've got the group in favor of it that are saying that, no, it is not taking funds away from existing schools, and then you've got the side in opposition that says it certainly does. I contend you myself, as the Chair of the School Committee and as a state representative for over nine years, it does take money from our existing schools. Make no mistake about it. So don't go into the voting booth tomorrow confused about it. It does. Don't listen to the Globe or the Herald or even our governor, because he's wrong on this. Until the state, and I mean the state legislature, addresses the inadequacies of funding charter schools, because that's really the crux of the problem. Legislature has not fully funded charter schools for at least the nine years I was there. So we need to understand that we will be diminishing our schools by allowing expansions of charters into our city. And I'm not opposed to charter schools in concept. I'm opposed to an additional charter here in Fitchburg. So please, when you go to the voting booth tomorrow, if you haven't already, consider that. Consider that we will be diminished. Our kids that are in the existing schools in Fitchburg will be affected if we add another, an additional charter school in the city of Fitchburg. Thank you. Resource Committee Report. Mr. Stevens.
Let's see, Resource Committee Report, we met on November 1st. We approved our minutes from the September 30th meeting. We had some grants and donations that were submitted, which will be in, the Resource Committee voted in favor of accepting, and they will be on tonight's agenda. That's from the NiPro and the Fitchburg Education Association grant. We had some school choice requests, which we recommended. There were no line item transfers. The enrollment update, as of October 1st, we have 100 and new students who will be, who are in our school year this year. That affects our Chapter 70 money for next year. We had a budget update from Mr. Jokala, and we are running a little bit in the red in the special education budget right now. Staffing updates, we're going to have a new person helping out, replacing Mr. Pierce, who was in central office, who helps with placing the children, new children, when they come in. And we have a new person coming in there. We did talk a little bit about building facilities and had an update. We also had Mr. Roach came in and spoke to us about senior privileges, and we discussed some of that, and there's going to be more coming on that on a later date.
Any comments from the committee? Thank you, Mr. Stevens. I think you fill the school building needs category as well, in your statement. Facilities, or is there something else you need to?
Facilities. We talked, we had on November 1st, also, we discussed the current and future projects. Crocker roof is done, solar and memorial roofs are being done, I think, is Rhinegold done now, Bob?
The panels are almost done being installed. The electricity still has to be hooked up, and then the memorial is next.
Yeah, they were working on them. We also, Ms. Pierce, we talked about the memorial seat auditorium, and that is, that is on the agenda, and I mean, we are looking at that. There are some problems with Memorial, Jim Plore, which is going to be taken care of. MSBA had a site visit on October 20th, and we're looking at new building. We also have, I think Paula's doing, Ms. Giaquinto, classroom capacity review at this time.
Any questions from the committee? Moving on, Policy Committee, Ms. Cragan.
We are planning our next meeting. You have some policies in your packet. One of them is to remove a policy, and then we also have the, let's see, the approved policy, teaching and intervention. So Juana will be meeting with Ms. Giaquinto at some point, and when, we're kind of going through the policy book, section by section, and we will be scheduling the next meeting as we review those different policies. Juana, anything to add?
Paul and I are going to be meeting Monday afternoon, so reports will be coming out soon.
Okay.
Thank you. Any questions? Moving on, Student Support Committee, Ms. LaBelle Pierce.
We met tonight, actually, and we had two key items on the agenda. We wanted to see an overview of the sports programs and offerings for girls and boys in the district, and really wanted to look at total involvement, number of sports for girls, for boys, for coed. So we got a report from Ray Cusenza. So there are close to 700 students who are participating in our district athletic programs. So basically, that was really just more of an informational overview meeting. And we also finalized, or are working to finalize, the application for the gala funds, the gala event that we hold now for the last couple of years, has raised money, and that money is to ultimately go to after-school expansion of programs. And particularly, we're looking at McKay, Memorial, and Rhinegold, because those are the schools that don't have either a 21st Century program or an extended day that already offers after-school activities, so we're trying to meet the need in those particular schools. So we're looking at, hopefully, a January launch date, where the second semester, we could have some additional after-school programming that has come from these gala events. So that's exciting. That's, that was it for new business.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Pierce. Any questions from the committee? Seeing none, there is no school personnel committee student report, we have no representatives tonight. Staff student presentations. Mr. Superintendent, you want to?
Sue Turigny to come up and introduce all, everyone who's here for your presentation about the National Youth Leadership Forum.
Not me. So in the spring, I came before you and told you all about our Girls on the Run program, and how exciting it was, and since then, we've offered a new program at South Street for the fall. A lot's happened since the spring. Riley Reed attended a National Youth Leadership Forum at Babson College. It was a Pathways to STEM Camp. It was an overnight camp, so she went and stayed on campus for a week. On September 22nd, our Girls on the Run team was invited to Mechanics Hall, to a stepping up for girls event, the Women's Initiative put on by the United Way, and our team of Girls on the Run students did the warm-up activity for over 500 people. And I was asked to speak about my coaching experience, but more importantly, Riley was asked to address that crowd of over 500 people about her experience as a girl on the run. So she's going to read to you her speech, but she's adapted it to you, and she's also going to talk about all of the amazing opportunities that she's had since last time we came to in the spring. So Riley?
Before I start, I would like to take the time to thank Ms. Turigny for all of her support in helping my star shine. I am Riley Reed. I'm 11 years old and from Fitchburg, Massachusetts. I started Girls on the Run in the 5th grade at Memorial Middle School. I am excited to have started Heart and Soul this year. When I first started Girls on the Run, there was no possible way you could have gotten me up on this stage to speak in front of all of you. But after the Girls on the Run program, I am overjoyed and honored to speak in front of all of you. That is one of the things I love about Girls on the Run. Coaches inspire and encourage you to be the best that you can be and bring out the best in others. They remind us that we can be and do anything we want to. One of my favorite lessons was about gossip and hurtful words. The coaches used a tube of toothpaste and squirted the toothpaste onto the center of their palm. The toothpaste represented hurtful words. The coaches taught us that once words are set in out, we can't ever take them back. The toothpaste was impossible to put back in the tube without damage. Trust me, we all tried. No matter how hard you try, you can never take your words back. I had the opportunity to attend the National Youth Leadership Forum, Pathways to STEM, this summer. Girls on the Run helped me build my confidence and gave me the courage to attend this overnight camp. I even gave two presentations at the end of the week. During the week, I built my own bristle bot, analyzed blood drops from a crime scene, and dissected a beef heart. My favorite part of dissecting the beef heart was that I was on a team of six, and I was the only girl. Four of the boys had to excuse themselves from the room because they felt nauseous. The one remaining boy could not make eye contact with the heart, but continued to support me. Without Girls on the Run, I probably would have missed out on the biggest opportunity of my life so far, yes, all 11 years. I was recently invited to attend the National Youth Leadership Summit in Washington, DC. I will have the privilege to witness the President and Vice President of the United States take their public oath and be sworn into office. I will also have the honor of watching the Nobel Peace Prize winner Malala present. Through Girls on the Run, I have developed wonderful friendships and bonds that will last a lifetime. I want to acknowledge some of my teammates that are here at School Committee tonight, Maya McCall and Annie Flormon, are not only teammates, but have been my best friends since Mr. Blank's kindergarten class, and of course, my sister Ruby. Thank you guys very much for being here. Watching all of my friends cross the finish line at the 5K was incredible. All 12 of my teammates ran or walked to complete the race. It was fun to cheer and encourage one another as we passed throughout the course. It was easy to spot us because we were all wearing colorful tutus. The race was amazing. Seeing so many girls encouraging girls, and so many women encouraging women, was inspiring. There are moms, dads, grandparents, sisters and brothers, cousins, babysitters. The amount of love and support is beyond words. It doesn't matter if you finish first or last, as long as you are always doing your best and moving forward. Thank you for this amazing opportunity to present and share my Girls on the Run experience, and thank you for supporting Worcester County Girls on the Run. My name is Riley Reed, and I am proud to be a girl on the run.
How old did you say you were? You really 11?
Wow. Can't wait till you're 18 and see what you do then when you're in high school. Unbelievable.
The United Way people were very impressed with her as well. There was a woman, the guest speaker was Susan Papalia, and she was the head of the medical tent during the Boston Marathon, the year of the bombing, and she met Riley, brought her up on stage, talked to her. She's actually a heart specialist at UMass Medical, and she's using stem cell research to regrow damaged heart, so she was very impressed. Riley wants to be a biomedical engineer, so she was very impressed with Riley as well. Just as a final, for the fall this year, our 5K is not going to be in Boston, they're actually doing a Worcester County one. So on December 4th, it's going to be in Winchendon at the YMCA, yeah, the YMCA, and it's a 1.5, I'm sorry, it's a 5K, so it's 1.5 out, 1.5 back on the bike path out there, and it's an ugly sweater race, and our teams this year are really looking forward to it. This year, it's also open to the general public, and we'd like to have as many participants as possible, because the money will go back to Worcester County Girls on the Run. So we'll probably be sending out an information flyer. December 4th, it's a Sunday at 11 o'clock in the morning in Winchendon.
At the YMCA.
Clark Memorial. They have a bike path out there. So I had forwarded out the flyer today to you, to ask you to forward it out to everybody else. Later in the day today, I did.
Can you, because I checked my email, I didn't see it. Can you just check and make sure that I get it?
Yep, I will.
Because I'm not remembering it.
Send it to all of us, yeah.
Yeah, send it out to everybody.
Does anybody have any questions for Riley?
So who would be going to the inauguration? With you?
Well, we're not really sure, because everyone in my family pretty much wants to go. But I'm pretty sure that whoever really wants to stay there the whole week at a hotel or whatever is welcome to come with me, I don't really care.
But it's a full week?
Yes, because it becomes more of the leadership opportunity, so it's like that camp is extended, so she'll be meeting up with a new group of students, they'll have some initiatives that they'll have to do, and then they get to actually see the inauguration.
And are you with all the same age group?
It ranges from the ages of 9 to 12. That's what I believe.
You may be able to witness historic inauguration this year.
I'm excited.
I have a comment. Riley, you are marvelously confident, and you are a very, very capable speaker, so I wanted to compliment you on that, but I also wanted to ask you to talk a little bit about, were you always this confident, and what can you, what can you say to your peers, kids your age and older or younger, to help them find that confidence, so that they also, you know, can present to 500 people?
Well, thank you, but I probably wasn't always as confident. I think I knew I had it in me, I just didn't trust that I could. I would say to find something you're good at, because then you can build all the confidence that you have there, and then you can spread it out to all the things that you love to do.
The wisdom of an 11-year-old.
Are you really 11?
You know, I say it all the time here, if you want to be inspired and you want to have faith in the future, go into our schools, talk to our students. I used to say, talk to our high school students, now I have to say, talk to our 11-year-olds. Because, you know, I think people take it for granted, how smart and how caring, and especially here in Fitchburg, people wanting to give back to their communities, and that's really what's going to make for good, strong communities. So thank you so much, and thank you, we couldn't do it without the leadership of our teachers and everyone else.
Molly coaches with me, and she goes to both sites, she's at Memorial and South Street.
That's what I wasn't sure, that's what I thought.
Yeah, so Molly, Molly is. She's also a coach with us in the Girls on the Run program. I just, I want to just share a little story. I know I'm hogging the stage, and I don't mean to, but there was a little girl at South Street that approached Molly last week, and was just tearful and just very, very unhappy, and she said, Mrs. Reed, she said, there's, there's a cloud over my star, there's a cloud. So we talk about our stars, and how to let them shine brightly, and how to remove stars and bad feelings and things like that. So Mrs. Reed said, what's wrong? And she was being displaced from her home, there was a lot going on in her situation. She was going to not be able to attend the after-school program because of busing and transportation issues and things like that. So, yeah, we worked with the family and worked with her, and we were able to keep her and her two little sisters in the after-school program. And on Monday morning, she ran down the steps to the nurses. She skipped, yeah, jumped down the flight of stairs, and she said, my star is just shining so brightly. I'm just so happy that I can be in the after-school program again, and thank you, Mrs. Reed, and so it's just like, these things are just the greatest thing, and, you know, Molly does a great job with all of our little South Street students, but she's very supportive here as well. So I wanted to share that, I think it's important that you know that these programs are just amazing for our kids, especially with all they're dealing with.
I saw Carol Resnick at the, I was at the Commissioner's Office this morning, and Carol Resnick mentioned, I said, "South Street, we're in three years, let's keep it going," and she said, "Great things happening." You know, it's great to go places and have people say positive things about the staff and what's going on in your school, so Carol was very complimentary about the new program at South Street of the 21st Century, so thank you.
I would like to commend Mrs. Turigny. Many teachers will do things for a few years, but Mrs. Turigny has been doing many things for the school system for many years.
30.
I wasn't going to say it. I hired Mrs. Turigny. She's been, for 30 years, been contributing back to the system for our students. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. Thanks, everybody.
Moving on, approval of the minutes of the regular school committee meeting of October 17, 2016. Do I hear a motion?
Make a motion.
Motion made.
Second.
Motion made in second, and all in favor, say aye. All opposed? It is unanimous. No need for executive session, correct Superintendent? I was just informed by Mr. Stevens before the meeting that maybe we need to look at these two agenda items, new business and unfinished business from previous meetings. You want to speak on that, Mr. Stevens, that you learned in going to a conference?
From the Attorney General's Office, and that we had at the Cape, one of the attorneys that works for the Attorney General said, you really shouldn't have your new business and unfinished business on your agenda. And he said, the new business, if you have it on, you should have none if you have none. Because if you have something new that's on, it should be on your agenda. An unfinished business, if you don't put it, you can't just bring it up, unfinished business, because somebody may read the agenda and may want to speak on something, and then they could complain about that. So he recommended that you don't have them on your agenda, and it doesn't stop you, stop us from having something that was unanticipated coming up at any time. Something could come up now, or something happened after we send the agenda in on Thursday that we need to address, we just take a roll call vote to have something be discussed.
You know what I was going to suggest for the committee and for the superintendent and staff, perhaps this is something, would we give this to the Policy Committee to take a look at the entire document? I mean, I know, Mr. Jokala and I talked about some of, there seems to be a little conflicts on the committees and what we're calling them. It doesn't match what I've got for committee assignments, so maybe we ought to, you think Policy Committee would take a look at this to see?
I think we can take.
You want to take care of it?
Yeah, we'll take it. We've got Cabinet tomorrow afternoon, we'll bring it to Cabinet, and we'll try to clean it all out.
And just see what's necessary and what isn't.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Stevens, for that information. Any Communications? Is there anyone who wishes to offer public comment? There's a five-minute limit?
Sure, just to double back to Communications, so really great Mass Association of School Committees convention. Mr. Stevens and I carpool down there, and Marissa was down there for most of it, and I do want to say that the, Mr. Stevens has been selected as an all-state, state committee person. He received the award for Division Four for All-State School Committee, and that is a huge honor, and it was very thrilling to have him be recognized and be at the reserved Fitchburg table. And Mr. Stevens is a worker, and he doesn't need awards, he doesn't need accolades, he needs none of that stuff, but it was really nice to see him get an award and some accolades.
Bring out the cake.
Okay, yes.
Superintendent's Report.
Yeah, so speaking of accolades, I opened up the newspaper, and, you know, I often, some mornings, I do that with trepidation, you never know, and there was this great article about two Boy Scouts who had really come to someone's rescue, and it was a really well-written article, and it, the two Fitchburg students. So I did a little checking and went on, you know, into our X2, because I wanted to know who they were, and I realized, these are our students, these are Fitchburg Public School students. So I sent an email to the editor of the Sentinel and said, you know, if Fitchburg Public School students had done something bad, they probably would have been identified as Fitchburg Public School students. But here are Fitchburg Public School students doing something really good, you know, and I really would ask you in the future, could we? And he said, absolutely, you know, that, and it was not of an intention, but it's just the way the article was written, because they're also Boy Scouts. So the focus was on Fitchburg Boy Scouts. So I called each of them and their families to congratulate them for what they did and for being great representatives, not only to their families, but of the school department and the community, and I invited them to come here tonight, so that we could officially thank them. So I'd like to ask Anthony LaFrancois, I can pronounce that, and Christopher. Help me. Bjornson, I asked how to pronounce it, and he told me, but I forgot. I do better with the French, obviously. Bjornson. So come up and talk to us about what happened that day, and the crowd that you see here, most of them are here backing these two guys up. Talk about that day, and talk a little bit about, you know, what it is to be in the Boy Scouts, and welcome.
All right, so as you guys know, I am a Boy Scout, and I love it. It's awesome. Troop 10 was awesome to me when I first joined. I guess Boy Scouting is the best thing that ever happened to me.
Boy Scouting is not just about being with people, it's to build leadership skills, it's to build skills that help you throughout your whole entire life, basically. It's not just for school and everything, it's for your future, it's something that can go through a legacy throughout your family too. So becoming an Eagle Scout is a main goal for most Boy Scouts. Seeing that my little brother just joined Cub Scouts was actually pretty big for me, I'm going to be honest, because now I know that there's a legacy starting up, so.
So tell us a little bit about how you came to this honor and acclaim, what happened on that day?
So I just came from a Boy, well, we came from a Boy Scout meeting, and I happened to be doing first aid that night, and the first aid teacher was awesome, and we did a lot of hands-on stuff, and I didn't think I had to ever use that, but I didn't think it would be that night either.
So what happened? How did it, what took place?
We were coming from Townsend, we were over on like Main Street by Dunkin' Donuts, and I was watching a girl cross the street coming from CVS, and she was struck by a car right at the beginning of North Street. Before my mom even was stopping the car, she, I was out of the car, I was already over to the girl. His struggle was the push-button door. I think he would have done the same thing I would have. She was hit by a car, she had a compound fracture, and she had busted her head open. The head wound was not visible until after she was laid down. The bone was not visible till after she was laid down, and so I took my sweatshirt off, wrapped my sweatshirt around her leg, he took his sweatshirt under her head. There was an empty off-duty that showed up, and I refused to let him lay hands on her until I had ID proof.
Was that part of your training? I read that in the newspaper article, that you asked for ID. I never would have thought, it's great. Was that part of the training?
Well, because the teacher is a firefighter, and I feel like him being a firefighter, he would have And I feel like him being a firefighter, he would have, he would do the same thing.
Sure, yeah.
So, that's why I kind of just use it as an instinct.
It's the right thing to do. Yeah. Good for you.
He was telling us that you never let someone take your patient unless you know that they're gonna help them or they're...
Good for you.
So, you guys took ownership of this person.
Chris said that, you said that Troop Ten, the best troop he's ever seen, that was what you said. Are they the best?
Yes.
I've gone to a lot of, are you working on your eagle?
I have to hit my life first. I'm close. Just gotta set up my meetings.
Yeah, that's great.
I'm looking at the different colored scarves. What is, do they represent something different?
They're different ranks. So, as you rank up, you get different scarves and different patches on this arm.
So, at what level are you both, like?
I'm a second class.
And then I'm Star Scout.
So, now, do you go on to Eagle?
It goes Scout, Tenderfoot, First, Second Class, First Class, Star, Life, then Eagle. And I've heard different stories that Eagle is probably one of the easiest to get, but it's a matter of, can you get your project done before you're 18? Because, you know, our troop, we are pretty lazy people sometimes.
Scouts always tell the truth, don't they?
They tend to do things last minute.
But we are one of those troops that want Eagle Scouts and we turn out as many Eagle Scouts as we can. And basically, everyone that's been in our troop has been an Eagle Scout.
Wow.
Wow.
Fabulous.
The people who barely show up to meetings actually hit their Eagle Scout. This kid, William Hitchens, he's a, he does marching band for Townsend. So, he's barely at meetings. He just hit his eagle. He finished it, like, last minute. But, you know, that band interfered with it, so that's not particularly his fault. But at least he got it done.
Do you guys know what you want to do for a living? Or is anybody following medical?
I do. I want to be an EMT.
Wow.
I made Tenderfoot.
I think that's great. I said, I think a lot of people would freeze in that situation, but to take what you've just learned and apply it that quickly is, is pretty amazing.
Expecting him to be, like, as young as he is, only being 12, I expected him to freeze up and just go into panic attack mode. And I was pretty surprised that he didn't. I was surprised that the girl did not pass out on me. Thank God she didn't look at her bone because then I would have just, I don't know.
That's tough.
It was a jinx to me, I'm gonna be honest. Earlier that day before my meeting, I was watching Chicago PD. Same exact thing happened. A college girl hit a eighth-grade high school girl. It was a red car. It was by a fire station. It was by a coffee shop.
That's weird.
It was just an exact.
Really?
So, I take it as a jinx. I don't know how he took it, honestly.
I was just surprised that I had to use it 10 minutes later.
I wouldn't call it a jinx. I'd call it fortunate.
Universe speaking dear.
Jinx would be negative, so this was fortunate.
I mean, a jinx, for me, not like, I know it was gonna happen, but, the lady that hit her, oh, was only going 20, 35, but she still sent her pretty far. And she landed on her leg first, which made our situation somewhat better because it was a life or death situation after that.
How long did the EMTs take to get there?
10 minutes.
10 minutes.
Is that long?
Well, when you call 911.
That was a rainy night, too.
Oh, was it? Yeah.
When you call 911, you go to Auburn, then they transfer you to Leominster, to the State Police, and then they transfer you to Fitchburg.
Wow.
And...
The central fire station's right there.
I was just gonna say.
And no one, no one called until, like, my mom got out of the car. And that was one of the things that I had to hold back without yelling at people. The lady had no emotion whatsoever, which made my mom pretty mad. But I explained to her that it was her adrenaline that got her up. So, you, there's two types of adrenaline. There's adrenaline where you're just so scared, you don't know what to do, you don't know how to react. And then there's adrenaline where it's just like, you know what, it happened, I don't want to even show any emotion whatsoever. I could tell that after talking to the lady that night, she cared a lot. Only being a college girl, I don't see why she wouldn't have cared. And the cop was talking to a guy before me and the guy really made me mad because he was right behind the accident when it happened. And he lied to the cop's face. He said he had changed his story into, he had two stories. The girl ran towards the car, which I don't see any girl running towards a car like that. Or the car speeding up to about 50. If the car had sped up to about 50, girl would have been long gone. And there would have been no doubt about that. So, and when I told the cop, I told the cop my side of the story, the girl who hit her gave the same side of the story as I did. So, that's what he took from it. I did tell the cop that the girls did not have her headlights on because when I got over there, her car was still started up, her headlights were not on. Legally, if it is raining, headlights have to be on. In the dark, they have to be on. The girl was wearing bright colors. She was wearing bright blue jeans and a bright green sweatshirt. And he, the lady said she didn't see her. So, I mean, if you didn't see her, you didn't have your headlights on. And it shows right there, when your car still started up, your headlights weren't on. So.
You could have a future as an investigator as well. Very nice.
He's gonna be an EMT. He's gonna be a private eye.
I know. Very nice.
Alright, well, I think the mayor is...
I was gonna refer you for the criminal justice program at Fitchburg State.
Yeah. I have, I have citations for you two gentlemen. That's all right. Let me come around from the city. I want to thank you for your efforts. You guys stay at that. Alright, guys, work with, with you. Alright, I'm gonna read this out. "Being hereby known to all, the City of Fitchburg, Massachusetts hereby offers its sincerest congratulations to Anthony Lafrancois and Christopher Bjornson. In recognition of your rapid response and emergency preparedness with assisting a vehicular accident victim on October 27, 2016. Entire citizenry extends its very best wishes. On this memorable occasion expresses the hope for continued good fortune." Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. See? You're learning.
Great.
Oh, wait, one more.
Wait a minute. Thanks, guys.
Well, thank you, guys. And thank you to their families and everybody who supported them and gave them an environment to be good guys.
Thank you.
Alright.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Okay, Erin Vassington, gonna talk to us about the Red Raiders Lending Library with Eva Kelly.
Yeah.
Yep, yes, yeah, go ahead.
Alright, just, Eva's gonna shut me off after 10 minutes because once I start talking, I ramble. But basically, the Red Raiders Lending Libraries is a literacy program in the Fitchburg Public Schools. And basically, what we do is we set up classroom libraries in each classroom in all the elementary and middle schools. And the first year, I set up the classrooms. Each teacher got 10 books per student to start the library. And then I go back to the schools every year and I give them three books per student to keep the library stocked. And basically, it's a good program. The kids like it. And I brought, these are all thank you's that I know you're not gonna look at, but I just wanted to show you the hundreds of thank you's that I get from the Fitchburg students. And then I have a whole thing of thank you's from the teachers of how much they like the program. And some of the notes are really, really special. They mean a lot to me, but, you know, the kids kind of really go all out. And it just means a lot that they like the books. And I think it's important. And I'm very nervous because an 11-year-old girl got up here and spoke that.
They're tough.
Program, I first want to thank, the main reason why the program is even in the schools is because of Paula and Eva Kelly. And I really want to thank them because when I approached Eva about the program, I had talked to a couple other people in the school and everybody just wasn't really interested. And Eva really was very interested and she went to Paula. And they allowed me to come into the schools and to start this program. And I started out at McKay and then eventually every, I do every school now. And I also want to thank Paula because she, she not only did this, but she also was the first donor to the nation. Yes, so I, I passed out a, well, Eva did, just a brochure to explain what the program's like. But the important thing is on the page that Eva gave you is just, basically, it just thanks everybody that, that helps me run this program. The way I get the books, and actually, I want to thank Elizabeth Walsh's husband, who is not only on the Fitchburg Cultural Council, he's also on the Friends of the Fitchburg Library. And for the last two years, and I'm hoping this year, the Cultural Council has given me, the first year, they gave me $500 and the second year, they gave me $1,000. And he encouraged me to go speak to the Friends of the Fitchburg Library, which I really didn't want to do because I didn't want to ask them for anything because I thought they have enough on their plate. I don't want to bother them. But he encouraged me to go and I went and I talked to them for about an hour and a half. So, that's why I'm gonna be shut off in 10 minutes because, and I walked away with $1,500 from them because they felt that this program was very important because a lot of the children in Fitchburg, well, they don't have books of their own, but a lot of them can't get a, a library card. So, they're not able to get books. And some of the schools, as you know, don't have working libraries. So, some of these children have no other way to get books other than this program. So, that was a very generous donation and I'm gonna buy a lot of books with it. But there's tons of schools, I mean, I'm just listing, Slidbury Public Schools is my number one school. The entire town of Slidbury or city, I think it's a town, they run a two-week book drive for me and they collect about 12,000 books every year for me. They've been doing this for six years. And, you know, I can't use all of the 12,000 books in my program. I do need 12,000 books a year, but I can't use all of the ones they give me. But I do donate to some of the other charities or nonprofits, I guess, in, in Fitchburg. Books that I can't use, I give to other organizations. So, most of the books that come in from my book drives do go to all of Fitchburg. But there's many schools, I mean, and they're listed there, I won't list them all, that do book drives for me. I also get book donations from many libraries in the area. I get grants from the Fitchburg Cultural Council and an organization called Beers for Goods, which is a group of people that work in City Hall that are pretty amazing and they have this great beer festival. And two years, they gave me $1,000. This year, unfortunately, they couldn't because some kind of law is changing with the way they, I don't know, I don't know what it was, but they weren't able to give out grants this year. And then I, I get money donations from a lot of the banks and different people. And so, I have them all listed here. But the way that came about was Norman Boudreau. I'm sure everybody here knows Norman Boudreau. I met him at a Beer for Goods Festival and he liked my program. And so, he talked to all his friends that were presidents of banks and they all sent me donations. And so, every year, I've been sending them a letter saying, "Please donate again," and they have. So, they've been very good. And, and then, of course, author, I don't know if anybody read Captain Underpants, but author Dave Pilkey, he's my biggest, he's my biggest donation so far. I sent him a letter and I explained to him my program and I told him about the Fitchburg Public Schools. And he sent me 100 autographed books and he gave me $5,000 to buy books that weren't his.
Wow.
So, that was, that was pretty good. But anyway, that's basically what my program is. If anybody has any questions or anything about it, or I don't know if I even, it's probably, I didn't explain it very well, I'm sure. It's in the brochure. I was a little nervous because...
I have a question.
Go ahead, yeah, yes.
Where do you keep all these books?
Well, thanks to Norman. I used to keep them in my house, in my basement, in my mother-in-law's basement, in my mother's basement. But Norman got me free storage from Aubuchon Hardware up at Park Hill Plaza, behind Dr. Barron's office. I have, it's like 650 square feet of storage space that I only pay insurance on. So, that saved me a fortune. So, that's where I store all the books.
Can you talk a little bit about how you, how the, the teachers can choose the books, but they can also send the students?
Yep. That's why, maybe Andre, you could help me out here tonight. But what, what happens is I go into the school and I basically, this is where I do it for Memorial and I lay out, I probably bring about 4,000 books to this school. And each teacher comes down when they get a break and they pick out their books. Some of the teachers, you know, maybe they don't know what the kids are reading, if it's a social studies teacher or something. So, I allow the middle school to send students down. So, they'll send like five representatives from the class, like a, a lower-level reader, a higher-level reader, and, you know, boys, girls, whatever. And the kids come down and pick out the books. And I love it when that happens because I honestly, I just love, you know, seeing the kids get excited about the books. And so, I, I really wish that more kids could come down and pick out the books because books really are for the kids and the kids know what books they want to read. But I know that would be crazy and that couldn't happen probably during the school. But I, I do wish that, I, I do wish more teachers had the opportunity, I guess. And I wasn't gonna mention this, but I, I did speak to one of the teachers and I said, "Why doesn't everybody come?" Because not all teachers participate. And she said, "It's, it's coverage." She said, "Even if just that one day that you're there, if we could have a sub that could maybe just fill in so that each teacher is definitely guaranteed, you know, 15 minutes or whatever to come down and pick their books," or if, if they could be allowed to send some students down or whatever. Because the kids get excited when they see some of the places I'm in the hall and, "Oh, the books, the books!" And they're all excited about the books and stuff. And so, I, I just feel bad if a teacher doesn't come down and then that, that classroom doesn't get to, to have books. So, whatever. But I, I do, the kids get excited about it. And there's actually one little boy that was in a preschool class that I volunteered at. And he was kind of always a little bit of a, not a troublemaker, but he was always very active and whatnot. And I saw him at McKay and he's in third grade now. And he came running over to me and he said, "Ms. Erin, Ms. Erin, do you have Super Diaper Baby?" And I had the book and I gave it to him. And he, he just was so excited. And I was just so happy that he was excited about a book because I just, I know he always had had a tough time just, you know, sitting down and reading a book. And just, it really made me excited that he was so thrilled with the book. And so, it was a very happy day for me. Does anybody else have any questions?
I have one more question. So, if someone wanted to donate to your program, who would they make the check out to?
Actually, I became nonprofit. And it was, another thing was through Beers for Goods. Because when I applied for their grant, they said you have to be a nonprofit. And I couldn't afford to become a nonprofit on my own. So, I became nonprofit through the Community Foundation of North Central Mass. So, that's where I have my account.
That's the way to do it, yeah.
Yeah. So, if anybody wanted to make a donation, they could send it just payable to the Red Raiders Lending Libraries and it would go to the Community Foundation. And I think the, I wasn't honestly looking for any, any donations from anybody here, but the address is on the back. So, but please do not, I wasn't passing that out for that reason. But, but yeah, I'm with the Community Foundation. And they're, they're great because, you know, I get my name out there and I have a place where people can make donations because a lot of people ask me if I'm nonprofit. And so, now, when I shop for books, I'm able to, you know, get it tax-free and stuff. And, and because I'm nonprofit, I've, I've been able to volunteer with the Scholastic, Scholastic Warehouse. And they let me work. I worked two complete months and I get paid in books. And I probably get about $5,000 or $6,000 worth of books every time. So, they're really great, too. But, I mean, basically, I couldn't do this without all of the people listed here. And like I said, most especially Eva Kelly because not only did she start it, but she is my contact at schools. When I say, "Alright, I'm coming to the school," she sends out the emails. She, she sets it all up for me and I just show up and do it. So, I, I really appreciate everything that she does for me. So.
I'm hoping, Andre, that, that can be worked on because I don't know why every class can't come down and pick out a book.
Yeah, I wrote it down. We have an, we have an adco coming up, so I'm gonna put it on the agenda.
I know we run book fairs.
Need to know in advance, right?
I mean, we run book fairs and every class comes, I, you know.
Yep, we'll work it out.
Yeah, that, that'll get...
I mean, I will... I mean, I will, because I want to just plug two principles, and one being the Longjo's principal, Craig. He is insane about this program. The second that email goes out, he is signed up just like that because he wants the first. He doesn't know that I actually have, I even everything out. Everybody gets the same, but, you know what I mean? But he doesn't realize that.
Don't tell him now.
He thinks if he signs up first, he's going to get the best books. But he's always there. Every one of his teachers comes down. He's very excited about the program. And honestly, I get emails from those teachers, oh, do you have this book? Do you have that book? And I just go and deliver the books that they're looking for. And I've just, I love that school. If I lived in Pittsburgh, that is, I mean, I like all the schools. I don't mean...
You don't want to get shut out of any school.
He really is. And then at South Street, Mr. Thompson, he is, those teachers, if I'm not there when I say, I mean, like I say, I'm going to be there at 8:00, I get there a quarter off because they're lined up waiting. And they're one, I mean, they, they get so excited. There's just, I mean, all the teachers do. They're very, they're very good. But those are my, those are my favorite schools, and they do...
Well, hopefully, it's going to be like that at every school.
Yeah, right.
Well, thanks.
Thank you so much. This is great.
Sure.
Great job.
Erin, I just wanted to, so it's so great, it's so great to meet you, and you did a wonderful job. I was not aware of the mechanics of these books getting into classrooms. I volunteer at Rheingold, and I've been there when, when books have been distributed. And let me tell you, there is a, an excitement when the books, when the books are laid out on the rug for children to select that is not like anything else I've ever seen. And literally, you see children swimming in books because they're like, oh, I want that one. And then it's like three away, so they're just sort of crawling through. And, and these kids are like in this kind of sea of books, and they're all, you know, I can have more than one? Like, oh my, like, they're just beside themselves. Beside themselves.
I do, I really like seeing, I mean, when the kids go down the hallway and they see me, they do, they get so excited, and, you know, oh, can I have one? And I'll just slip them one because I just, I wish that I could slip it to all of them. Like, I really, I would love it if the kids could come and pick. And like I said, I know they probably can't, but they, books are for the kids, and so, you know.
Thank you so much. But, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jonathan, I think you want to go to the White Mountains, and you're looking for...
Yeah. That would be okay.
Okay, well, everybody has your application, and I think, have you done this one before?
I did, last year was the first year.
Yeah, okay, so this is a repeat performance here. You did it last year, and you still want to go again?
Yeah, 100%. I went as a chaperone as well. The biggest complaint that the students and staff who went was the fact that it wasn't long enough. A lot of these kids didn't get an opportunity, have never had the opportunity to be outside like that, to have, you know, Mount Washington in the background on a postcard, and just kind of be part of nature, and getting inside of the streams, and picking through rocks, and finding animals. The kids, they had, you know, their eyes were large as saucers, and they had smiles on their faces for the three days that we were there. And the teachers loved it, too. But it's a really great opportunity. I'd like to do it again if I have your permission. That'd be fantastic. We kind of stole the idea from, from Longjo. I guess McKay had done it before. And being a transplant from the Granite State, I always wanted to go back, and it's a great opportunity to bring the kids to the Appalachian Mountain Club.
Yes.
How do you determine the date?
It's based on our testing schedule, as well as what's available at the AMC. You know, we try to go like May, June, but we've got to be careful with MCAS and other testing.
Okay.
And this year, we're trying for a four-day. So that's why, hopefully, hopefully, they have the time, and hopefully, we can get it to a reasonable amount. Because last year, the AMC was incredibly helpful. We, with busing and the actual trip and food, you know, three meals a day for the kids over three days, it cost us under $200, and that was fantastic, per kid. And every kid who wanted to go could go. If anybody struggled, we would help them from our McKay account that we have. And it just provides an opportunity for something that a lot of kids don't get a chance to do. And they were amazed from beginning to end.
Any other questions?
I'd like to make a motion that we take this action item up now, out of order.
Second?
Can we do it? Second? Go ahead. Prove the superintendent recommends to allow McKay Arts Academy sixth-grade students to plan a trip to AMC White Mountains, New Hampshire. Potential date to be determined. Motion made in second, and all in favor? Aye. Opposed, as you can hear. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right, you can leave tonight.
Wouldn't they love it? Thank you so very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Charter schools?
Yep, so the last meeting you asked to have put on the agenda.
You kind of, I kind of addressed it, huh? Addressed it, that, you know, that we had voted as committee to oppose question two, and you kind of brought it up tonight, and you talked about it, that charter schools will hurt Pittsburgh Public Schools, and not only Pittsburgh Public Schools, but all public schools in the state. And sometimes our neighbors, the suburban communities don't realize that there's only one pot of money, and it's going to come out of that one pot of money, and it's going to hurt all schools, and not just a few schools that they've talked about.
Could, may I add as well? Because I think you referenced something, Mr. Stevens, in the email coming out of the Hyannis meeting about Pat Jalen. The Somerville Senator, State Senator Pat Jalen, I think, is right on the target when she says that the charter question is distracting us from what's really needed in education reform. We have to figure out special education. We have to figure out how we're going to pay for it. And the fact that this is going to siphon off more resources from high-need districts, that's the critical question. And I feel like, been trying to say this for years, and it's a smokescreen. So you're, maybe, some people see it as a way out from a situation they're not happy with. But what that leads to is less ability to actually tackle the fundamental problems that public schools are facing. And you look at children who are starting with a 30 million word gap, you look at the absolute social, emotional needs in the school system, and it's not this, just this school system. I teach in a different one. Every school system is struggling with social, emotional problems, and it's getting worse. And so now we're going to have less money to deal with that. You need wraparound services, you need after-school programs, and none of this will get addressed with that charter school question. And that's what makes me honestly furious, that this is distracting from what real public schools need to be doing. So I'm sorry, just had to, can't contain it anymore.
That was one of the things that, in the legislative session, that Senator Chang Diaz, who was chairman of the Senate Education, and then Pat Jalen, and I can't think of the House, it's not from the House, who was the head of the co-chair of the Education Committee, and she was there.
Is it Jen Benson?
No. No, no. And she ran the Boston area. Yeah, yeah, she's Wall fam. But, that's what they talked about.
Representative Peish.
Alice Peish, yeah. I knew it, and I just couldn't remember. But very supportive, but again, they said, this is time, the last year and a half, this is all we could, we can, we've been talking about. And, but Senator Jalen is one of the biggest supporters of public schools, one of our best friends in the Commonwealth, so...
Just have to wake up, people. This is not going to fix the big problems.
It's what I said earlier, it's just, it shouldn't be complicated to people. You vote no on it, believe me. This city cannot afford another charter school. And I think that if this passes, it will embolden certain groups to once again launch into an effort to establish a charter school in Pittsburgh. And that, you know, I filed a bill before I left the House, and I'm going to ask, I'm going to urge Representative Hay to refile it, which says if you're going to establish a charter school, the physical building must be in the underperforming district, or town or city. And that's not what's happening now. You can, we're no longer, we're no longer underperforming. So if you're going to build a, you're going to put a facility, it shouldn't be in Pittsburgh, it should be in the, and they wanted, this last effort, they wanted to make it a regional approach. Well, then locate the underperforming district and put that facility in that, in that city or town. But... The thing is, wherever that charter school is located as the host community, you're responsible for the busing, you know, so... Oh, yeah.
And can we please pay attention to the vast majority of students who we really have to educate, right? That's, that's what we should be paying...
I mean, you know, you can say what you want about charter schools, but they are, they're exclusionary. They really do cherry pick. They pick who they, you know, the best that they can. And, you know, if you're unfortunate and not chosen in the lottery, what does that mean for those parents that feel as though they don't have any choice? They're still out. So it's got too many flaws. I have read that there are, you know, you've heard there are 32,000 kids on the waiting list, but I've also read there are 7,800 open seats in charter schools. So why aren't they filling some of those seats from the waiting list? And, you know, I... Because they don't have to, exactly. And it's, it was a good conversation. We had good information. Professor Maurice Cunningham from UMass Boston, the last big Italian political scientist, he talked about like $22 million of dock money coming in from out of state to try and influence this. Why is that happening? Why is all of that money coming in from out of state to influence charter schools in Massachusetts?
They're anonymous.
Anonymous, so you don't know where the money is coming from. They also... Out-of-state money. They also talk about big donations that are given to foundations, and then the foundations making the donations to the vote yes, so that they get around giving them the money being, you know, knowing where it's coming from. So why are outside groups doing this to Massachusetts? We need to protect our children. Vote tomorrow, vote no. Thank you.
Yep.
Here, here.
So I was hoping to give you an update on Footsteps to Brilliance. We're still waiting to finalize, but we've got the funding lined up. And as soon as, I'm hoping it, for the December meeting, I can give you a timeline of the rollout, the citywide rollout of Footsteps to Brilliance, which is the literacy initiative. You also have a flyer, "Fitzburg Community Safety Forum: Opioid Use and Abuse Addressing the Crisis." I was contacted by the District Attorney's Office and asked if I would host this. So we are hosting this Wednesday night, November 9th, at Pittsburgh High School from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. And it's sponsored by the District Attorney's Task Force on opioid addiction. And there will be a table, a panel discussion there. I will be in attendance, and I'm encouraging you, if you're available, or anyone else out there in the community. And I know they're also notifying people. And then Thursday night, there's a community leaders bowl-making for hunger at Applewild. And I'm going to be giving it my shot to make a bowl, and it's a hunger initiative. So if you're available, I don't have the time right, I think it's 6:00. Yeah, 6:00 or 6:30. I think it's 6:00 at Applewild. So if you're interested in that, it's a great cause, and it's really community-wide coming together at Applewild for the issue of hunger. And then tomorrow is a very, very important day, and that is the Professional Development Day for the city of Pittsburgh, for the School Department of Pittsburgh. And I was looking, I've been watching the emails go by, putting together our professional development for tomorrow. And I said to Paula, just give us, give the school committee a quick update on what's going on, because people have no idea the kind of professional development that goes into one of our days and the different things. So Paula's just going to give you a synopsis overview of what will be happening in our schools tomorrow while people are voting.
Thank you, Superintendent. The flyer, the agenda for the day, was in your packet. And we, I coordinate as well as I'm responsible for actually doing a presentation or training tomorrow, but it's...
It looks like that.
Yes. But we have workshop, day-long workshops for every group of staff members, our preschool teachers, our elementary folks, all of the regular red classroom teachers will be engaged in a science workshop. And we determine that when we meet with all the administrators in August, we lay out the, sort of the general plan for two of the three days before students return. First day is always a general meeting with the superintendent, keynote students, and then contractual time. But we lay out the PD plan for the two days, and then for this day. And at the beginning of the school year, it's professional development for elementary folks is usually connected to math and literacy. And this year, we're rolling out a new reading program, K-8, and it's our second year of the URECOMMERCIAL program. So those days were really focused. Science is, we've had for the past couple of years, and for some of you who are on the school committee, Mike Kosky presented the Science Program Improvement Plan a couple of years ago. And looking at our science MCAS scores in the middle school, we really need to focus on science in the elementary so that students have exposure and experience with it. So Eileen Spinney and Jessica Stadlowski, who replaced Mike Kosky, and then all the elementary math and EHA coaches are going to be facilitating the science content workshops, and then grade-level unpacking of the new frameworks. The Department of Ed adopted new science frameworks in April, so science is pretty new for most of our elementary people. For the Title I Intervention folks, we're presenting, the literacy coaches, myself and Eva are presenting on the key tenets of what Title I programming should be about. And Wendy is working with all the elementary, Wendy Abrahamson, with all the elementary special ed teachers to unpack accessibility issues around math and special education because our special ed students are still highest at-risk learners. The middle schools operate a little differently. Mr. Thomas is working with a consultant for the year from CAST around something called Universal Design for Learning, and it's a way to help teachers create lessons and units and classroom experiences designed for all students rather than retrofitted for ESL or special ed. So he's working with UDL. Craig is working on social, emotional learning and educating the whole child, and he has a number of initiatives to ameliorate some of the data-driven issues at Longjo. And Lourdes is working with her teachers around their innovation school. It's kind of a collaborative curriculum. They don't have English language and social studies teachers, they have humanities teachers, so they're redoing curriculum work. And then the high school, and I can get you all the agendas, Jeremy has a very extensive workshop-driven agenda where about every 90 minutes, folks, cohorts of teachers move through all the stations. And then Goodrich is also working on curriculum alignment. And then for all of the paras, Rowan and Alicia have organized training for them, multiple trainers. And then all of the individual groups of special educators, speech, OT, school psychologists, they have organized training as well. And then this is really exciting, for all of our K-8 art, music, phys ed specials teachers, Kathy Brady is running a responsive classroom training, and the Northeast Foundation has just published, November 1st, a book on responsive classroom for special teachers. So every one of the participants will get a copy of that book as well. And then the nurses go to Northeastern, and Pam Rivers, in her absence, has made arrangements for folks to get flu shots at South Street and the high school because we have all the staff here, and there are no buses to wait for, so everyone can get their flu shots and stay healthy through the winter. So it's a jam-packed day for everybody. We have evaluation forms to collect so that we'll get feedback from the teachers, and I'm sure everyone will be very busy.
Thank you, Paula.
Just a question about, on page five, where you have the clinical interventionists and the Dr. Cole presenting effects of trauma on the brain, moral development, attachment, and learning, that, to me, is really interesting. And I'm wondering, how does that information go from the, go from the folks who are experiencing it to, like, the wider school community? it to, like, the wider school community? Because the social and emotional learning was the theme of this year's Mass Association of School Committees. I attended a couple of workshops on that, and then one on mental health as well. So that looks incredibly rich and so on the nose and on time. How is that shared, how is that shared further?
Well, primarily, the folks who are involved in that training are the first line of folks who deal directly with kids who are demonstrating behaviors that may be the result of those issues. Depending on how, what that looks like at the school, for example, Craig's entire training tomorrow is on those kinds of issues and related issues. So he may expect, which he does expect, his folks who have more information to come back and actually run workshops for colleagues.
Wow.
And the same is true at the high school, where Jeremy will have his clinical-oriented folks come back and run training sessions. We also have resources through the Department of Education. Rowan and I are being trained as statewide trainers around, it's called the LEAP Project, Low Income Education Access and Inclusive Practices and the Effects of Poverty and Trauma on Learning. So we have one more training day, but then our mission is to come back and actually create a training, a set of workshops, workshops series and modules, to train staff. So we have a number of ways, we're going to start with the SPSAs, we're doing some work tomorrow, I'm doing it with the Title I people. So we try and get it out to as many more personalized venues, because it's hard stuff to talk about, so.
And you heard Jessica Minahan speak, and we've been working with Jessica Minahan for a couple of years now.
Wow.
She was the speaker who, I forget which morning it was, Thursday morning.
Yes.
Very dynamic.
Yeah.
She's consulting at Rhine Gold this year.
Right, she's working with the district right now.
And several of the staff, guidance counselors, special ed teachers have been to workshops this year. And all, Alicia, Rowan, some of their staff, myself, and I think three elementary principals have attended her workshops. And everybody has her books, so.
Wow.
We try to hit it at a number of levels.
That's great.
Questions? Okay, we have some acceptances. Donation for McKay Arts Academy, a used desktop computer from Pittsburgh State University for a value of $200. A grant, a grant from Nightbro, Foundation in Clinton for $10,000. And that is, that goes directly to our AP MEMS program, which helps to pay for, as you know, the kids that are taking AP courses at the high school on Saturdays. There are those Saturday sessions, which they really would not be able to do this rigorous work without. This is a grant that helps to pay for that. So it used to be, was all paid for, you know, from Mass Insight, and then over time, now we've had to find others. So thank you, Nightbro, $10,000. And then from Donors Choose, for Chromebooks, for Memorial Middle School for a value of $800. Also for Memorial Middle School, $1,150. For transportation, for the annual field trip to the Hall at Patriots Place. $331.39 for South Street. And that is for a reading and writing workshop, a writing center to be used by students. Also from John Thompson, from Donors Choose, $356.41, a new computer to be used in a From Davita Healthcare Home, nurses, $500 for gym equipment, balls and bats. Then you have before you a recommended action, and it's for accepting of a grant, and it's the Pittsburgh Educational Foundation, to go towards Footsteps to Brilliance for a total And a funding request for school choice, and this was gone over in the resource subcommittee already. And this is for our ELL. We added an ELL teacher. And this is providing the technology for that teacher and students, 15 Chromebooks, two black boxes, two power strips, and 15 headphones, and then some software, RAS Kids Reading A to Z and Science A to Z for a total of $9,693.26 to come out of school choice.
Okay. There is just one thing to make sure the records, you have the grant listed as the right amount on the, on the...
On the action card, but not on the agenda.
Which one?
Which, which grant?
So this is the...
Pittsburgh Education Foundation.
What number is it in the 16?
16754.
Okay.
It's, it's just, it says 95,183 on the agenda, but it's, I don't know if it has to match up. Obviously, that's the one that matters right there, but...
What is it?
95,483.
Yep.
95,483.
483.
Do you know which number is the correct number?
Go with the one that Cali has on the spreadsheet.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so go with the one on the spreadsheet.
43 is the correct number.
So 95483. Thank you for pointing that out.
Yeah, you can see how, well, someone transposed it.
The one.
One and four are developed.
Yeah, but that's, that's a motion, so that's, detail's important. Great, thank you.
Do we, do we want to, well, we need to go through the agenda continuing, correct? You just went through the budget items category, Superintendent?
I did, and now there are the policies, which I think were already discussed in the policy update before.
Okay. So do we want to consolidate those action items?
Sure.
16-747 up through and including 16-760?
Make a motion to bundle those.
Motion made to accept.
Second.
Motion made in second. It all in favor?
Question?
Yes.
Speaking on the motion.
We're proving, I have a question on the policy on suspensions.
What's the number?
What number is that, Mr. Stevens?
Okay.
758.
758. Okay. Students who are absent from school during the day or who are suspended are not eligible to attend school functions in the afternoon or evening, unless specifically approved by the administration. I object to somebody being suspended from school and then being approved to participate in something, is what I'm reading.
Can you read that again, Mr. Stevens?
Okay.
If I, if I might, my recollection was there were kids who might have been to a funeral or that, which, they've been absent from school, so they would, if there's something beyond their control...
It says who are suspended is what I'm concerned with.
Right, yeah.
If they're suspended, they can't participate. They can't, you know, I mean, I remember when I was at the high school with suspended kids, and I stopped kids from playing football, you know, they got suspended, they couldn't play football on Saturday, they got suspended on Friday. They couldn't play on Saturday. And this, I mean, if you're suspended from school, I don't see how you can participate in an activity.
But I don't think it's, it's one or. Students who are absent from school during the day or who are suspended...
Who are suspended.
Are not eligible to attend school functions.
Unless...
So what the intention was, I...
Unless approved by the administration.
Right, because if they were absent from school for a funeral...
Not a problem, not a problem.
Right, so the way you're saying is that the wording is not clear enough.
Right, I mean, if the kid was caught smoking in the bathroom, which, you know, maybe might happen, and they were given a two-day in-house suspension, and there was an activity that afternoon, they shouldn't be able to participate. That's always been, you know...
I just think it needs to go back to the policy committee for...
I'd like clearer language on that.
Okay, well, that, I think we can easily fix that just by creating a separate sentence for the suspension.
Right, right.
So the fact that we've got a couple of things going on here, it's still, it's just the second reading, so we'll add this to our next, and we'll wordsmith it so it's clearer.
Okay, yeah, I understand, you know, the funerals and all of those things, and, yeah.
All right, so we had a motion to consolidate 16-747 up through and including 17-760, excluding 16-758, which will be tabled for further discussion. We have a motion to accept.
Motion.
Motion made, seconded, to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
I suppose none. Anyone wishing to speak? Otherwise, we'll call for adjournment.
Motion for adjournment, Mr. Chairman.
Motion made. We'll hear a second. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.